Agenda item?
Yes. So Helen Wood and if Lauren Asselrod comes along of Meadowbank Makers are here to present a few items and Daniel Banyer is also here as a local citizen and visitor. And under old or unfinished business, I've forgotten to add the continuation of the ethics conflict of interest policy discussion.
Okay.
But I did add that to your agendas there.
Okay. Everybody signed in tonight? Who will be last minute? Got something?
Well, I just want to make sure that the speaker, the people that speak have a time limit of ten minutes.
Okay. What about them minutes?
I'm going to accept as granted.
Any second on that?
No, second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Who opposed? Karen. Appearances by local citizens and visitors. Alan?
As many of you know, Meadowbank Makers, we had a holiday market a few weeks ago. And we totally out blasted our capacity for the bar shop. So what we'd like to propose is we're looking into our winter schedule and we would like to one, hold a meeting upstairs for January 7th in the evening, about six o'clock to bring, we've had a lot of new members also in the last couple of weeks. So we would like to have, be able to get us all together in a space big enough to be able to do so. Number two, we also would like to start, we've been asked to do the events like we had a couple of weeks ago more frequently. And so we would like to see what everyone thinks about us being able to do a second Saturday event upstairs for January, February, and March.
Right now, is there anything going on upstairs?
Not that I saw. And I did provide Helen and Lauren with the rental agreement with the upstairs space that we have up to. I will double check to make sure that nothing else has come up for those dates. When did you want to have the meeting?
On January 7th?
Monday, January 7th. Around six. And then the second Saturday?
January 12th. February 1st? March 9th.
And what times?
We haven't actually ironed that out yet.
Okay. The only potential conflict is that Brooke Huesmus generally does yoga classes on Saturdays and not heard from her about upcoming winter schedule, but...
She doesn't have a winter schedule.
She does not.
Based on our membership meeting on the 7th, we have had to bring it up to vote and everything. We are cooperative, so we're bringing it up to vote on a timed schedule for the second Saturday events.
How does everybody feel about that? All good?
Yeah.
Do you?
Me.
Me choose.
Yeah.
Right. As far as, as board's concerned, you're, you're welcome to use, you have the rental agreement and stuff, so you can connect with. Kristen, is that, you'll...
So January 7th, Monday, looks great. And the 12th looks great. As do both nights, February and March. So if you want, when you confirm, please let me know and I can...
Okay.
The only thing that I said to Helen was really usage fees or anything like that. I said that the board would have to weigh in.
Yeah, I'm not really sure what we're considered as cooperative, whether we're a market cooperative or farmers artists.
How does the board feel about that?
I would think the first meeting would be probably no charge would there be for...
You could, sounds reasonable. The first, your, your organizational meeting, you could use a room without any charge. And then if you decided to hold a event there, you'd probably need to, we'd probably need to collect some money to defray the cost of cleanup, or you'd have to make arrangements to clean the, the room after you were done. So we all set with that? Daniel, you'd like to address the board?
Is the other lady in?
David.
There to gather.
For everyone, my name's Daniel Banye from 541 Briar Hill Road. I'm here today to pick up where Kimberly had left off a couple of weeks ago about the concerns of ethics misconduct and conflicts of interest. I would like you folks to understand that what I'm going to be conversing about today is, is not a hypothesis. They're not assumptions, but they're facts, 100% facts. It is important for the board, the constituents, to understand this because when people send emails, send text messages, leave, leave voicemails, or converse about information, that information can be recovered and it could be, you know, that individual could be held accountable. So as you know, I've been, you know, faced with some opposition in this community, but, you know, language from town officials, town people, things saying, we're going to, we're going to run this guy out of the town, we're going to take care of this guy. And what hurts the most is that we're going to send this kite back to where he came from. It's completely inappropriate. This type of rhetoric is unacceptable. Okay? And just remember, when you folks try to negate your accountability, when you put in an emoji, or thumbs up, or LOL, or any type of connection to this type of rhetoric against me, my existence in this community, and the cohabitability of me and my family and friends here, it's illegal. We have an ethical dilemma and the ethical paradox in the decision-making process is possible because there's two imperatives here, neither of which unambiguous, is acceptable or preferred. The complexity arises out of the situation of conflict of obeying one situation, the Briar Hills Warren Switch Clan, their movement, and obeying others which is transcending my rights. I want to talk very quickly, since you've only allocated me 10 minutes, about four specific topics: recuse, ethics, misconduct, and conflict of interest. Well, focusing on the ethics, I've asked this town to approve me for another building permit. You're all well aware of that. Judge Walsh said in the Supreme Court I'm eligible for that permit. Since the denial and elongated reasons behind this, I've been told I need to pay 10 additional dollars cash to Deb Hawkins and $50 to the zoning administrator's private organization. I have that, emails from the server from this, this town, I have it on many emails that several of you people were CC'd on. That is not only illegal, it's unethical. I took a statement from Deb this week and from Judy that they have never taken any fees from anyone other than what is applicable on the, on the chart over there. And I have copies for that. Okay. While $60 is not, is not a lot of money, there's no other individual in the last year under both Eric Mack's administration and Howe that had to pay any fees other than round numbers that are stated right there. So why do me and my property have to pay additional fees? I don't have to pay $10 to Deb cash and $50 to the zoning administrator. That's how I feel, just how you folks feel. When we talk about ethics, we talk about ethics of how, Mr. Richard, you have order in this, in this room here. On two occasions this year, you've allowed people to use the word murder and bombs. It's all documented. That is completely inappropriate. Okay? Furthermore, it's inappropriate, it's inappropriate for you, sir, that on the meeting of the election night, you said, and I quote, open quote, "I have my employer purchase a copier scanner to use at my employer, I insert your employer telescope, Randville, New York, so that I can do town work while I'm at work." How can we believe that's ethical behavior? You're administering work you're supposed to do here at your job? The point is, if you want to hold me accountable, you folks need to be held to same accountability. I can't believe that's, that you have a guided moral and ethical compass if you're going to allow self-interests like that negate my rights. Right? We know the, we know the model of this town, right? We don't have any people of color here. We don't have LBGTQ homosexuals here. We don't have this, we don't have that. But now, the Jew-loving gun enthusiast can't live here either? I mean, that's ridiculous. Like, this is just ridiculous. My conflict of interest starts very profoundly with something very important. I believe Mr. Bob Jones has a conflict of interest and has suppressed my rights and my existence in this community on three facts. Number one, he's an employee for the Hewlett Farm Deer Flats in the Hewlett Trust. That's what his W-2 says. The Hewlits are the number one opposition to my existence here and in a butter. But this man works for them, sits here and votes against me, votes for the best interests of the town. That's ridiculous. That's ludicrous. Furthermore, furthermore, this man has attended a Klan meeting by the group. You think it's funny? You think it's funny? And also had proceeded when the Hewlett family took my gate down on my property. How is that legal for him to be here and to vote and not recuse and not have a misconduct? Mr. Cleveland, you laughed too.
Well, the reason I thought it was funny was I, when you used the term Klan, I have, this is out there, anyhow.
But, well, I don't know what else you call you folks, yourself. But here, here's what I have for you.
Okay.
The first six months of this opposition here, your son Kenneth was dating a Hewlett. How can we not believe she didn't tell your son to tell you rhetoric to vote against me or diminish or sequester my rights in this community? You went to a Klan meeting too!
I didn't go to any Klan meeting, let me tell you.
The meeting you went to, whatever the verbiage is, you were not supposed to be there. It's as simple as that.
I believe I went to the very first meeting they had. And that was to collect information.
Okay. You're not supposed...
Which I did.
Right. You're, you're not supposed to be doing that.
Okay. And I, furthermore, I don't think my, anyhow.
Listen...
I don't think my, I don't think you need to drag my son into it either.
We're not dragging your son, but it's not ethical. You need to recuse yourself. You cannot allow these degenerates to start making things against me and this town and then you vote on it.
I think, I think, I think, I think, I think, this is, before this gets out of control...
It's not even going to get out of control. I have the key to it.
It's already is, as far as I'm concerned.
The thing is, I'm calling you folks out and holding you accountable.
Well, you started out by raising your voice.
Well, I speak, I have a hearing deficit.
So quiet down. And all your information is wrong. And I will get a lawyer and I will prove you wrong.
Do, do whatever you need to do.
Whatever I need to do.
Yeah.
But your information is 100% wrong about me.
At this point, at this point, Mr. Banyer has the floor. Finish your statement. And we would like a copy of that statement to go in with the record.
Here's, here's the moral of the story, okay? You folks have not been fair to me and it looks like your ideologies and your ideological viewpoints are moving towards an illegal movement, an illegal cause, right? You, you laugh, but here's what it is. I'm calling for you and you to publicly resign, okay? You don't need a lawyer. You don't resign by January 1st, I'm going to release to the media, Main Street media, social media, and everything I can, the proof that I have.
Please do.
It's not an hypothesis.
Please do. Please do.
That is a camera. All of your comments...
Sure.
Will be on the television. Everybody in town's going to know it.
It's fine. That's why I'm here.
Yeah, good.
So I'm calling for your public resignation because of the behaviors and the, and the methodology in which you behave. It's not appropriate. You, you can't go, are, so are you saying that the next Ku Klux meeting, meeting, you can go to that and that's okay, sit on the board?
Yes, I believe I probably could.
Okay. Here's the position...
Because as a select board member, I feel I have the, the right to go to at most any meeting that I am invited to, to collect information on what is going on in the town.
Collect information, but that information that you gather is favoritism towards your self-interest. You're not here for a self-interest.
What's my self-interest in this?
Did you vote for the change of school terminology or not?
I believe I did, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. That's self-interest.
Okay.
That's self-interest.
Thanks for pointing, thank you for pointing that out to me.
What I'm pointing out to you folks, you're in a very uncomfortable position right now. Okay? And I get that. Because you, you really believe that the information that I have, I have, that I have recovered will not hold you accountable. And that's the point where I'm calling the card now. That's why I'm here today, to make sure there is accountability. Okay? Mr. Jones, do you not deny that he works for the Hewlett family? I mean, that's just ludicrous. Like, these folks here may believe you and move towards that movement, but this is what the problem is. You're not being held to the same standards as everyone else. There's no accountability. If you want to try to zone me out, you'll zone me out. You want to try to do this, you'll try to do that. But the moral of the story is that now, there's a new sheriff in town. Not figuratively speaking, but people like Kimberly, myself, and other people, we're going to bring things to this community's attention and whatever level of the federal government to come down and hold you responsible. Because I know it's, it's invigorating. He's wrong, you're going to go home, whatever the case may be, but law needs to be administered because you took an oath, sir. You took an oath. And you're here by the electoral people in this community to do the right thing. And you're not.
So if I don't do what you want me to do, I'm doing the wrong thing?
This has nothing to do with me. I just recovered an email that you folks are considering making the terminology in the town of Paulette, that people can only possess guns, not use guns. The thing is, is that you know what I'm talking about. You were in that private meeting.
Your 10 minutes are out.
Okay.
So please, make your closing statement and hand us over that paper so we can put it in...
Please hand me, please hand over the statement.
Please make your closing statement and please give us a copy of that paper so we can add it to the records of this meeting.
I didn't start this gentleman, but I'm telling you something right now. I'm not leaving. And I'm going to make sure that everyone is held accountable, the same way you're holding me accountable. Right? I went to get a permit to do it the right way, but now it's held hostage by additional prop fees. I mean...
Okay. Appearances by local citizens, right? John? Frank?
Has this Wharton Foundation visit to planning commission been discussed at this select board meeting yet?
Yes.
All right. I'll leave that up near the fourth end where it's going on there.
Okay. Valerie, did you have anything? Kim?
My problem with the whole ethical concerns and violations is in my situation, I personally feel like I was running around in circles trying to find out what was going on next door in my house. I mean, I was told to contact Howe. It took me over a month to get him over to my house. Then he said he couldn't go on the property. He didn't have the jurisdiction. He talked my neighbor into paying $1,500 to have a drone flyover video to prove there was significant change going on over there. We did that, we had it all set, I mean, we handed it on a silver platter to Howe. And then it was requested that he not show up to that particular meeting. I just feel that everything is pushed onto Howe. I feel bad for the man. He works two hours a week. I know darn well that Jack Williams sold the town slag pile, the beautiful slag pile in the village of West Paulette for a dollar, I believe. And that's where I feel there's a conflict of interest. That's why I initially brought up potential conflict of interest and violations. Things like that. Honestly, I really, I'm going to the state from now, I don't have faith in any of you men to really do what's necessary to protect my family, unfortunately. Lived in New York for nine years, upstate New York, never had a problem. I don't think I was in that town once. And I'm just shocked at, since coming here, all of the issues that my family has faced between getting the loan tax bills, getting extra sewer bills that were supposed to be off of our, our home, our unit, now this. I just feel like something is wrong in Vermont. The fact that there are no ethical standards that the town is following, I just think that's crazy. I think that's crazy. So, I mean, that's just where, I just wanted to say, my point of the whole ethical things come in is that I know darn well that Jack sold the town a slag pile. I feel that now, he's let to do kind of anything he wants. I understand there were some slate guys here last time moaning about how they have families to support. Well, this operation is being done by an 18-year-old nephew of Jack's. It's not the entire Newmont slate business. Honestly, I feel Price Topper in Randville probably employs more people than Newmont right now, let's be honest. And, I mean, you, you need that one pile, that one section, 150 feet from my property line, when you have acres upon acres of land you've already destroyed? Really? You need that area right next to my house where you're going to endanger myself and all my neighbors, our water, our roads, our sewer line, everything. You really need that to feed, to, to pay your employees? I, I just think the whole thing is so outlandish. I, I've lost faith, faith in this town. And I haven't even been here a year. And that's, that's a shame. So I do think there is, I do think there is ethical violations. I do think there is conflicts of interest. I think we need a change-up of the board, frankly. I think you all look at everybody like you're bored. A lot of times I see you reading while people are speaking. You're not interested. I mean, so that's, that's my thing. And that's, and I appreciate when I do have the attention. Thank you. Because I do, I want to get my point out. I'm new here. I, I love it here, aside from dealing with the town and dealing with my lovely neighbors. So thank you for letting me speak.
Excuse me for a minute. But seeing as hell, I've been called out already, I much will address you too. Because I wasn't here for the meeting that, where you... What's the first thing you see when you go out your door? A slag pile.
Yes, and I was informed by my agent that they were no longer active. And if you look at them as an outsider coming, yes, yes, oh, I've, I've come to terms with Vermont grandfathers in these slag piles for all existence. Please be aware, if you move to Vermont, you better make sure you walk every neighbor's property. There is 400-plus exempt quarry holes in the state of Vermont, over 400 exempt slate quarries. So now guess what? This is, this is a problem that you're going to face. I came here because I care about the environment. I love the state of Vermont and I wanted to bring my children up in a fantastic place. And this is what I'm dealing with. Somebody who wants to blast 150 feet from my property, they don't want a fence in their hole. They will not commit to telling neighbors when they will blast, when they will work. They've been over there Saturday and Sunday, all day long. Now this is, slow down for the time being, because I am in touch with the state. No, I'm sorry, this is not what I came to Vermont for. And I'm sorry that you just assumed that people coming here because, hey, there's old slag piles. You should automatically know that those are grandfathered in and they can start up again at any moment in time with no notification whatsoever.
Well, if I was moving, if I was...
I had no idea. How would I know that? How would I have possibly known that? But my agent, my real estate agent told me, and no...
Then maybe you should speak to your real estate agent.
Listen to me. I have neighbors that have lived here their whole lives that were under the impression they were no longer active. It's not just me, Mr. Snarky Comeback. It's everybody.
Well, I'm sorry.
It's neighbors that have grown up in this area. So it's not just me. Thank you. There's another neighbor that recently moved in, was told the same thing. Whose accountability is it? Whose responsibility of it is it? It's not in the Vermont Real Estate Disclosure Form. There is nothing about exempt slate quarries. So that's where we're coming, we're finding an issue.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Dan? Anything? No? I'm not familiar, young lady with a black coat? Do you have anything to add for the... For the gentleman, actually, I'm not familiar with you. Do you have anything to add? Okay. Eve?
I'm here about a, a separate issue.
Okay.
I'm not sure when the appropriate moment is.
Right, right now.
Go for it.
I wanted to ask about the proposed expansion construction at the library. I called Deb Hawkins and asked her if there were some plans or proposal or budget that I could look at to learn more about this proposed project. And she said that there was nothing on file that I could see, so I came to ask about it.
Yes, that is at a standstill right at the moment. Doing a little preliminary work and seeing how people feel about, about it.
It's my understanding it's going to be on the ballot?
Possibly. And possibly not. It may, it may, it may not be.
So it hasn't been decided?
No, not yet.
But we, we do have a...
We do have plans.
Secret, right? That she could see.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. Have you seen the plans?
No.
Okay, because there are plans.
She would like to see.
There are plans. I believe there's some at the library. I don't know if we have any here. I've got some at home, but I'll, we'll make sure that you get a copy.
That would be great.
Okay.
If any information is numbers, a budget, whatever, you have, I would love to see.
Yeah. No numbers yet on, just a very far out estimate, but I have, no, no firm numbers.
Okay. Thank you.
Marty?
Following up on what Eve had asked for, at what stage in the design does the architect feel he now is, is he in schematic or design development?
I believe it could go out for bid.
If it go out for bid...
It could.
Then there should be a full set of design documents and a spec book to go with it.
Okay.
Do we get a spec book? We didn't get a spec...
I don't think we got a spec book, but we've got a list of all the...
We have the drawings and stuff.
We have the drawings and all that.
Well, if you're, if you're putting it out for a formal bid, there's going to be what's called the project manual, which includes the contract form, the bid form, the insurance requirements and everything else. And that's usually appended to the specifications themselves, which we call out all of the materials.
There's a total list of all materials needed that, you know, that's ready for...
And he has not at this point done a formal cost analysis of this?
Um, I don't know if you would call it formal. There has been an initial cost analysis, but...
Well, when I met with you and him and Mary Lou months ago at the first meeting, there, there were some, some gaps. And when we asked him what he thinks it's going to cost, he didn't have an answer, but he said, "Well, if I had to guess, maybe $150,000." And then later, a number came back that it was more like $290,000. And I'm, I'm just uncertain. What is, if you don't have a full set of contract documents, meaning drawings and specifications, how is anyone supposed to bid this job so that you get a fair apples-to-apples comparison of what this is really going to cost? What are, what are the bill costs involved in this?
And we will know that before we proceed.
His design also calls for demolition of what had been a very expensive handicap ramp that has heating coils in it.
Yes. And very inefficient, I might add.
It would not have been inefficient if the cover had been put on like the original design's called for, so you would not have had the snow build up on the ramp. You would have had minimal snow and the coils would have been able to take care of what was there very easily. It's inefficient now because without a cover, you can get a foot of snow and the coils can't handle it. So I think what, what has happened is the, the threat of snow coming off the roof hitting a handicap ramp gave rise to a project. And the project grew. And I think we really need to kind of go back and reevaluate what's there already. If it's really necessary to meet compliancees. And also, I, I would strongly recommend holding up on any decisions until the, the library has concluded its current master planning study, which is going to yield significant data on what the library really needs. Because if you're talking about $250,000 to $290,000, you've got to make sure you're getting a lot of bang for the buck out of that. And right now, I'm not seeing very much bang for the buck by simply getting a chair lift down to the downstairs meeting room that, that was ancillary to the library from day one.
So you've basically answered your question then, that, yeah, basically things are on hold until we, you know, do a little more soul searching and...
But I think, you know, what, what the library board really needs to look at right now is the full documents. All of the drawings, whatever spreadsheets have been developed, what are the specifications. If this thing is ready to go to bid, there should be a lot of documentation.
Okay. Like I say, we'll get that to you.
I just had one follow-up question real quick, which was, I was wondering, this started out as a handicap ramp issue because of the snow, correct? And then that's where the idea to do a larger project evolved?
The problem, excuse, the problem is, even with the handicap ramp, you cannot access the Matt Wade Room.
Right. Have there been a lot of complaints about that?
No, luckily.
So, there haven't been any complaints?
Not that I'm aware of. It's just one of those things, maybe we should think about fixing it before there are complaints. And it's a nice little, and also, it's becoming used more as a meeting place. The only access now is through the library, so they kind of feel like someone has to be there to kind of look out for the library. With the ramp, you could access that room from the outside, and there would be no need to go up into the library for any reason.
Um, no. The proposal to access the Matt Wade Room would be via a chairlift. The ramp would have to come out according to...
Yes, the ramp would come out, because there'd be no further need of it.
Right now, and I want to make this very clear, right now, the library, as it exists, is fully in compliance with...
Yes, it is.
State Handicap Code and ADA. So, the Matt Wade Room was added on after the original library was done. It was considered an ancillary room. It has maybe the capacity for 15 or 20 people to meet down there, but we have ample meeting space upstairs for any events. So, to make the argument that you want to spend that kind of money to get down to the Matt Wade Room, it doesn't make a lot of sense. But if you want to spend your money, believe me, there's probably a host of other things that the master plan will say, we could really use space for this, or we could really use space for that. What I'm arguing is, you know, the money should be channeled to that which is important. And even, you know, I spoke with Kelly Wade about this, and even Kelly said, you know, are you kidding? Spend that kind of money to get a chairlift down to her husband's dedicated room? It's not there. It's not, it's not enough.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything to offer?
I'm Mark Axrood, Metowee Makers. Sorry, I'm late. I apologize. My bad. Just, I understand we're given permission, and thank you for using the upstairs space for our meetings on Sundays. We've been extensive conversations in the Planning Commission about the importance of Metowee Makers as a pathway to economic development, helping makers in agriculture and the arts in the area, on the area, building the area as a magnet for the makers movement. If you look at areas like Wheat's Hill, where the economy has just moved because of really focusing on the makers movement. And we're really hoping, one of the things we're looking at, Metowee Makers is a, according to the state, you know, registered marketing cooperative, which gives us an opportunity to begin to look for some funding for something like a makers space. So, this kind of goes along with what you say, you want to spend some money, let's spend it on something where, you know, makers in the area can actually, kids and adults can kind of learn skills that will actually enhance the economic development of the area. But I just wanted to sort of, like, say hi to everybody, so that you know who I am, because you probably see me, and I have one here as well, really spearheading sort of this movement. We've got 30 members, that's farmers and makers, artists, artisans, farmers, food producers, and supporting businesses, and they are generally using it in the creative economy and get the best of us. And it's a movement that's growing. Our Metowee Makers, the first annual Metowee Makers holiday market, say that ten thousand passes, was really a huge success, and everybody we talked to was so excited to see something happening in the town, this way bringing back some energy and vitality. So, we're excited to move forward, and thank you for your support. And one of the things we are looking at are some economic development, rural economic development funding for a makers space, that would be a community space where people could come in and make things. So, that's something that we'll be looking for your support for as well. So, you know who I am, I know who you are, and that's who we are.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I could add just one more thing.
Oh, did I forget?
No, it's one of my, one of my projects. One of the things, one of the things that we have, that we're bringing to our membership on our January meeting is also to hold workshops for agricultural businesses, for things like social media presence and marketing skills, and that's a thing, too. You know, most of you probably know mine as a Bob, makes maple syrup, and you have grass, and stuff like that. We kind of, that's one of the big things we'd like to do, is to give, like, other area farmers and add people of any sort, be able to have some workshops, going to have their education for building their businesses.
Okay. Thank you very much. Announcements?
So, a reminder that our next meeting will be held on Wednesday, January 2nd, instead of Tuesday, January 1st, so that will go out to everyone, but just a friendly reminder. Pete G., I don't want to butcher his last name, the gentleman from MHG Solar, will be planning to attend our meeting on January 15th. He is a gentleman who works with a company, actually, it might be of interest, they're a company that works on putting solar into not, slag piles that are not in use. So, he reached out to the board and asked if he could come and just kind of present what he does. It's really, we don't have much information from him, but it sounds neat, so I'm working with Judy. He requested to have some numbers of our last year in spending in terms of kind of energy spending, so I'll be working with Judy to get that ready for him. And then I also, just a little announcement for me, I met with Judy about kind of our future banking options, and that's a project that she said there's no real rush in, but it's just something that I'll start to kind of dig a little bit deeper into in the new year.
Excellent, thank you. Zoning administrators report.
So, you have that Hal sent along some emails, they sent it to the... So, he provided a fairly lengthy report, and then he sent me an email just before the meeting with an abbreviated action items list, so you'd like I can read that?
If you would, please.
First one is assignment of zoning application costs to the applicant. This action item states that the SB to authorize VA to add language to the zoning application form, that makes costs of mailing and publication the responsibility of the applicant. Second item, just for discussion, is to add language to the unified zoning bylaws that creates regarding firearm range use and limits it to some zoning districts to be determined by the Planning Commission. Note that this would regulate only commercial firearms ranges, not firearms possession or use, nor target shooting, nor hunting, et cetera, just commercial, as defined by the state. Number three, resolved items for now is in regards to the new not-slate quarry, and pending is slate ridge permitting, as well as town of pollut and the Tarbell conveyance. So, that's kind of the short list of what...
Okay, thank you very much. Road foreman's.
Has Deb got, in her report, you guys, a signature for the Planning Commission on the grant for the MRGP permit?
You were, you were involved in that, the grant, right? Some emails that went back and forth?
Right, so she doesn't have anything in the report, it was just emails. So, the gentleman...
Devin Neri.
Yep, so...
Yeah, he said he couldn't get it until Friday.
Yep, so the paperwork is going to be ready on Friday, December 21st, and it needs to be returned back by December 31st, and he needs a signature from a selectman, so...
One, one signature?
I think it's an announcement, it's a follow-up on this, the one that Tim wrote. It's the one on our COVID inventory for this figure. The Planning Commission was hired to do it.
Oh, okay.
It's not, it's not a big, big one, and then this is, I don't know if you guys have any interest or not in it at this point, but this is the information that was gathered through that, and it's for that MRGP permit that we are...
We have to buy it every year.
And we signed a letter of intent, and now that this is completed, in the next year, we will have to actually file for the permit. So, and then it's got priorities, list of erosion inventory, implementation plan, year to year to year, on their recommendation. This is not something we're locked into, it's just when the grants become available, these are the things that we should be looking at to fund them, and they're prioritized based on, oh, you can see the red segments, those are the trouble segments. And it's all consolidated here, which, as a whole, we are not in bad shape, because you can see that we have 9% of our roads that are in the red, and that's ahead of most towns, so we're not...
49% fully meets, huh?
49% fully meets the standard, and then you can see that we've got some that partially meets, and then a small portion that really are, they're going to require us to put attention to, so... So, you remember when Kipshaw, this is, this is all going back to that.
That stretched out quite a long time.
Yeah, this is...
Is that, was that electronically transmitted to us, or...
No, this was delivered by Devon, another guy, yesterday from, this is the new transportation administrator for the Planning Commission.
Okay.
So, anyway, I probably can go to the Planning Commission site and find out and forward it to you guys.
If, right, if we could get it so we could look at it, some, you know, if we could have that.
You know, as those segments become better, I'm able to go back into the past, which is what we've done, which has been the COVID on COVID inventory, and upgrade it, and, you know, all of that can be done on this D-Trans website, so it's... So, that, I have a directly permit, curb cut application for the property that you guys are in the process of getting transferred to Ben.
Okay.
Okay, it's in Ben Tarbell's name, which I don't know if that's premature or not at this time, but it's no reason to deny it. It's going to be, you know, I just told him to make sure that he maintained the full water to the district storm drain system there and keep his access below the town road, so that no water was introduced out to there. Those would be our only concerns, so I would, I just question whether, at this time, we can give Ben a permit for parcel that hasn't taken possession yet. I know that Hal and John Thrasher have been in discussion about it, and, you know, they're encouraged to get a curb cut application, so... Discussion of some of the ethics and conflicts of interest, I would suggest perhaps you didn't sign it, and let the other guys take care of it, just, just because, okay? And I'm sure you won't care.
Well, I tried to contact John earlier, actually, later in the afternoon, and he had a afternoon meeting, and he was not in the office. I left a message on his machine.
Yeah, well, he contacted me about that about two weeks ago, and Hal Wilkins had been saying, but I was, so I don't, I don't think until he gets clear title that we want to sign anything as far as, so... I mean, it's going to happen, but it's just a matter of when it's going to happen. We just got a bill from the survey, and I have a question on that, but...
So, I would make a motion to the board that we did not sign that curb cut at this time.
I would second that. That need to be voted on, or just, just held?
Or just held, or just held, okay. Okay, good.
My concern is maybe Ben Turner wants to make sure that he has proper access there before, and I think it's what they're thinking, but I'm not going to go into legal, and that's above my degree, so...
As far as this Better Back Roads Grant, he's going to send that paper on Friday, so are you going to be around to get it signed by someone, or...
I can be.
Where is it gonna, who's going to end up with it?
The last, the last correspondence was from Deb to Devin, stating that she will not be here, but she provided him with her personal email, if, so that he could contact her if need be, and I was included, so I added that I'm happy to take it, so that it doesn't have to go through a personal email, and that we can figure something...
Arrange to have it printed and sent back to him and signed.
Right, so at this point in time, you're also, you've been CC'd on those as well, just for your information, so I would suggest that perhaps we stand by and wait and see what Devin suggests, and then, I mean, I'm around, so we can always arrange a time to just collect a signature, and I did ask him to confirm who it gets sent back to. Because I'm happy to handle it, I just need to know more.
So, when, as the information becomes available, we'll deal with it?
I would imagine we'll hear from him tomorrow. It was just that last email that I sent to him was likely after business hours, because I couldn't get to it until later.
So, that's all we'll have to do to get that finalized?
Right, that's the grant application. What he's looking for signature on now is a request for reimbursement, so the Planning Commission will reimburse for their time.
And like you said, anybody on the select board could sign that?
He said either...
If he's authorized it tonight, that would...
Right.
He said the signature needed to come from either a town clerk or a select board member, so...
So, we got that covered, so whoever we can find first gets, gets it, so, okay. And winter maintenance is...
We've got plenty to work on while we're out in the water and snow, so looks like a break in winter weather, cold maybe, actually warm.
So, what are your projects, why you're not planning?
Ah, well, we've got the grader in the shop right now, we're just winterizing it, sort of changing it, changing it to flat blade, so we're ready to go, and then going to barn in West Pollut. We've been working on the trucks, just routine maintenance, sorting the bed chains and the sanders and this maintenance.
Okay.
Haven't had any significant problems.
Do you have a plan for rush cutting?
We always do, Mike.
Well, I'd like to just...
It hasn't snowed in three weeks, so...
So, as soon as these maintenance issues are resolved, or that would be your next action? Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
I still haven't heard anything from David. So, I don't know if we need to be thinking about someone else that's in the business.
Has the state made any comments about, because they hired him too, right?
Yeah, the same boat we have here.
So, you haven't seen any movement to go out? So you haven't seen any movement of where they're gonna do about, you know, inside more?
They have other contracts that's worked for them, where we can find somebody else, or not, I don't know. It might be, yeah, I think we'll hear something from Dave before too, on one way or another, if we figure it out, and we'll know whether we've got to move or.
Now, New York State, it's all done by the county, or?
County and state.
County and state.
When do they add their auctions, do you know, Chuck? When they auction off used equipment?
County.
Counties and state, and, are they hit and miss, and?
Yeah, generally in the, in the spring, at the Fort Edward facility. I don't know where the state does have their auctions.
State doesn't own that one.
Yeah, they're.
But they don't, but they don't own any, do they?
Yeah, they do.
They do own mowing machines and stuff? So, probably wouldn't be a bad idea if we kind of kept auctions and availability of used equipment on our radar in case we needed, needed to act.
You gotta, uh.
Okay.
Their place, was it then burnt? Which one of the highway?
I heard it.
What was it?
Was it that area?
No, no, it was J and B International. They had the, they had to fire the, the natural gas truck. They were working on the natural gas truck, and it caught fire in the garage.
Okay.
Municipal contract.
All right, I'll keep you posted on David. That's all I can do. I don't have any control over the auctions. I mean, I'm, I'm out of, out of work the 31st.
Thirty-first is your, your final. We got plenty of time to check out all the auction catalogs for us.
Yeah, there you go. Well, I know there's one on the 28th at the fairgrounds, but I don't see highway mowers in it.
Okay. Was there a report from the Planning Commission this month, or not?
No, I think so.
Well, he was here, but he left in.
Just the first of the month, probably?
Yeah, I don't, I have not heard anything.
Right, their meeting was last night, anyway, so they probably didn't have anything.
They moved into the redoing of the plan that they have to do, redo, which covers the direction of the town.
The town plan, yeah.
The town plan, and they split off the economic development into a subcommittee, which hopefully we're gonna try to tie in this community park and solar to organically grow a direction that will be along the lines of acres, and it's just talk right now, first meetings, it's coming up pretty soon.
Okay, well, thank you, Frank. Assessor's report? Nothing from the assessor. Town clerk's memo? She doesn't have anything to bring before the board this week. With reference to House proposed regard, proposal regarding a fee restructuring for zoning permits, I've been communicating with him on this. There's been some confusion and misunderstanding over what have been, what they are, and what they should be, and how to move forward from this point. Merry Christmas to all of you, and thank you for all you do. If any of you have terms expire in 2019 and are intending to run for another term, now would be the time to start thinking about your petition, and the office is closed next week until January 2nd. Have a great evening, Deb.
I haven't looked at the warrant yet. Oh, see ya.
Thank you.
You must have left a pen, hold on a second.
So.
Thank you.
Regarding the fourth, the fourth item about Kaiser.
Uh-huh, yeah.
Um, I do have, I'm not sure if you saw, I forwarded.
I did, I did see it tonight, yeah, that's quite a long, lengthy email.
Yeah. So just, since I brought it up, so if anybody's curious, it was just an apology letter regarding heat running out during the day earlier in the month.
Can you forward that to add to?
Sure. Does anybody else know?
Yeah, I do.
Yeah, yeah.
Basically, she just kind of went over the size of the tank, and just kind of moving forward about 3,000.
Let's.
Michelle wants to ask a question to Lori.
Oh.
Sorry, um, if you're in any major, we have a, we have a website meeting. We're gonna have a meeting in January 7th, 15 o'clock. It was, um, we, we, uh, we have the permanent board, and board could say, then, we accept the files, and, um, talking about, for, for, for. Um, will you get a blanket out, or? Yeah, yeah, and come on, learn more about us, and we do those, it's very major, and, 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 or we can send, um, website, and we can mail directly, and we, we, you know.
Okay, the warrants are going down through the line, so we can look at them. We have these budget li, letters to sign that, that we, our responses to everyone that, that applied to the budget. Everybody's still in favor of signing these, correct?
Yes.
Okay, man's engineering bill to be paid by the town, and I'll reimburse after I have a conversation with John. I'll start with those. The Kaiser people, Kaiser, whatever, are going to reimburse us for the bill from Bakers, but they're, according to that letter, it sounded like they didn't, according to their, what they delivered for fuel, they didn't figure it was out of fuel, or?
I'm sorry, I was just reading. So, the town hall tank size is a 660 gallon tank. On December 4th, we delivered 503 gallons. Unfortunately, we do know when the tank is dry. In 2016, we did just that and delivered 620 gallons. I understand that the technician that came out on 12/4 had stated that you were out of oil. However, the information steers away from that conclusion. Again, we cannot apologize enough for our mistake. For a 660 gallon tank, we aim to deliver 400 to 480 gallons, and your next delivery is scheduled for December 20.
You're signing everything? You're signing everything.
So we, it sounds like we should be, you know, some question whether or not that, according to the way I read it, it sounded like they weren't really sure that they ran out of fuel. That's why our furnace went start, right?
That was the, apparently, the reason that Baker gave of why it wasn't working.
Because it was out of fuel, or?
Had to bleed out.
The air filter was half air, I mean, the filter was.
Half air, okay.
It ran out in the morning, they delivered in the afternoon. So the furnace had quit before, before the delivery, so.
Before the delivery, okay.
There was a lag time there.
But they still, they still offered to.
Yeah.
We forward the bill, so that's good. And they also said that they need to get in to look at the library. So you'll, you'll see in the email when you get it, you can look it over. Judy will be in the office the 31st, same as my last payroll calendar of the year, so it'll be okay having John stop in on Wednesday morning, the 2nd, to sign payroll, so that they can all be dispersed on Wednesday, as usual. Not here on Thursday, so the payable checks can wait until the following morning. Is everybody okay with that? Is John okay with that?
Try to make sure it's John T. or John M., but not.
No, does that?
John M.'s fine with that.
John M. to sign the, sign all the checks for the.
For that two week.
And after, what, after the first of the year, Chuck's going to be retired too, and he won't be doing anything.
He'll be back and call, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, Ed, Mike, and John for meeting with the treasurer.
There is one that I can't sign. I shouldn't sign, so, so how do we delay that, or?
Give me a call order.
Okay.
Okay, so she's just thanking us for the treasurer candidates, and I have a little bit of information to bring back on that.
I screwed it, man, just said he's gonna.
That we won't, we need to keep private.
Are we going to hand it to the executor?
Well, I'll have to make, I have to tell you a couple things about it. So at the end of the night, we'll just go in real quick just to discuss that treasurer position. And that's that for the treasurer's report. Somebody want to make a motion on the warrants?
I'll make a motion to accept the warrants.
Any more discussion? All in favor? Puzzled? Carried?
Please sign budget letters.
The budget letters, these were the letters.
Letters are going.
We're gonna, everybody gets that, and is the response to their.
That's what goes in the town report.
Well, the budget, the messaging, for last week.
I'll be signing. Okay, in here. In here, tur. A letter from Jeff at the, at the sewer plant. He would like to, uh, keep his monthly contract the same for $3,300 a month. So that sounds good. And the plaster magic letter. I thought she said there was three. Where's the third one? You signed three warrants? It said, her note says three warrants. I only signed two. Maybe there's something more than this. Like, this is just that one ceiling thing. There's no, there's no bills for the month. Stuck in one or the other? John, did you find more than just two warrants? Had you, you didn't sign this one?
Let's look through this one. It's all stapled together, so. Says one in her office.
You got two?
Yeah, nothing. Just, just payroll.
Maybe somebody should call her and see. Can you call her? Do you have her phone number, Kristen, or?
We don't.
John, John has it somewhere, so I asked if we called him after.
No, I don't.
What do we have, your number?
I don't have it.
Can you Google it? See if you can do it, what's his name?
It's this one.
Outman Coolidge.
So what was added in this? I'm fine.
What's this? Oh, these are the lawyers.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yep.
Did I have to push for a nine or something?
Nine.
I guess we can't load down the warrants until-
Um, Mike?
What? Jay?
Jay.
Michelle has a question for-
Since I'm here, I'm not really familiar with the community. Where this media like being reached by town?
Call the general.
Okay.
Can you get through?
She's gonna come over.
Oh, did I forget it? Must have stuck together. I'll dial it back, sign it.
Anything from the emergency management director?
We reviewed that last meeting, so-
In the health officers. Wastewater passed again. Everything seems to be looking fine.
Did I miss something?
Some duplicates, I don't understand it.
What's that, Jeff?
Some of these are duplicates, or?
Um, three of them probably to the highway crew.
Oh, each one.
Cause it was all the same, right?
Gotcha. Just to know the form of, okay. Gotcha, gotcha.
Here, I'll put the few dollars.
What's that?
Did I get a chance to sign in?
Could you get a chance to review the ethics conflict of interest policy? As far as the ethics and conflict of interest policy, does anybody have any comments? Or do we want to, do we need to adjust it? Or do we want to accept it as written?
Uh, I think it was good.
We were all, we were all comfortable. And Bob said he was comfortable with it. So somebody want to make a, make a motion that we adopt? How do we, how do we phrase that properly? That that becomes our standard? Do we adopt that policy, or what?
Yeah, to, to adopt the policy, to adopt the policy that we had outlined for 2019. Has written.
Oh.
Check's done?
Yep.
I'm sorry.
Did you have three?
Ed, did you sign that? Only one, you only signed one of the two. You only signed one of the two by the time it got to me.
Oh, let me recheck.
The check, the one for the checks.
I think I got them both. I thought I caught it. So we just have the third one?
What's this?
That's the third one.
Oh, that one, okay. Did you sign it?
Oh, so Baker's burner charges $159 for that?
Yeah, but Kizer's going to reimburse us.
That's pretty reasonable.
Yeah.
Coming over here.
Yeah, you aren't kidding.
Melanite, basically.
Yeah, yep.
I'm into this. We didn't sign anything else.
You know, they're talking that they only, they only put in 500 gallons. And so, and it's a $600 gallon tank. When we ran out in 2016, they had about 600 gallons. So I'm wondering, it's really cold in here. I'm wondering if there's something going on with the furnace.
Well, there's a, yeah, they, they sent, Kizer sent us an email to Kristen with a whole outline of what everything. And Ed's gonna, she sent, she forwarded it to Ed, so he's gonna-
Good.
They've got to come down and check the library anyhow.
Yeah.
Okay. And so they can maybe check here because it just seemed like it's cold.
Yeah.
I'll take that red folder too, Ed, when you-
Okay.
What are we gonna do with this? I'm not gonna, we aren't signing it. Put that in a safe place, please. If I hear from John Thrasher, I'll come down and bug you. If I don't, get bugged. Did you get the sign in yet?
Yeah.
Can I see it?
Thank you, Judy, sort of value. All right. So... Who wants to make a motion for the ethics policy?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Who wants to second that?
I'll second that.
Okay. We adopt that policy of ethics, it was our sample that-
No, that isn't due till-
It's not technically due until July.
July, but it can be enforced.
Oh, sure. I would, I mean, I would, this is just an assumption, but I would assume that once it's adopted, it's in effect.
Right.
Do we have to then send that to the state prior to that?
Yeah, there wasn't any, any specific protocol on the DLCT website as to how it needs to be submitted. I think it's just-
I think it just said, it's like other policies, it's just, it's just here.
So I'll make sure that-
It needs to be on record in, in the town hall here.
The public could see that if they wanted.
Absolutely, yeah. It's, and there have been several folks that have inquired about it and I, it's visible to everyone. I've sent them the link and I've said, you're welcome to review it. Um, so I'll just make sure that it's, the policy that's available for public review is a generic policy. It's not spec, it's not obviously personalized to the towns. So I will, basically what I had gone ahead and done is just personalized it and I'll make sure that Deb gets that copy so it can be on file for-
Okay. Thanks.
Does that mean you add it to the list in the organizational meeting and you select for it to, when you go through your criteria, and a bunch of things you-
Oh, adopt it every year?
We adopt every year.
Do you know that answer?
Well, the, when a select board member is brought on, there is a pretty robust conflict of interest policy that is, that they agree to. So it's in the selected handbook. And it actually speaks about the majority of the items that are in this policy. This is actually technically considered to be a prohibition. Um, so that's a good question, I'll follow up on that. But I do know that there already is a pretty robust policy that the select board member would have to-
Because there's some of those things that we have to agree to every year.
Yes.
Like the amount of time for the speaker and the meeting night, and the time of the meeting night.
I mean, I, I have this, the handbook with me and I'm kind of, you know, I sit here and I pay attention and in terms of recusals and things like that, those are all items that you have all already.
Okay.
So every year you have a whole list of things to start that you go through down and who are on board for this year. So that would be something new that you just-
The organizational meeting in March. There's a whole bunch of things you have to adopt each year. You have to renew and stuff, so that may-
That'll be about in my town meeting too, of course.
Right, yeah, indeed.
So you worry, worry one day.
Is there any more discussion about the ethics policy? John?
Ed, give us a second.
In, in discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Okay, new business. Oh, actually older unfinished business. The Woodhouse. What's going on with the Woodhouse, Chuck? We have zero input.
Zero.
Maybe we should talk to a real estate agent.
Can't hurt.
They're, people come to them, so they know, so. I mean, everything that it costs us for the real estate agent just gets tacked down to the, the total. And then we let it go for what we got.
I guess we only, in town, we only have one agent now, right?
Yeah, Scott, right?
Chester, yeah.
Does, is Becky still?
Who?
Becky. She's still on?
Uh, not sure.
Okay.
Do we, so what does the board think? Who do we? I mean, I just, give it to Scott?
Yeah, I mean, it-
Keep him down.
Right. Talk to, talk to him about it and see, see what he, see what he can offer us. How do you feel about that, John?
It's fine.
Are you willing to do that, Chuck?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I completely just, I was thinking I was on it, but I wasn't. You need to sign.
Okay.
The conflict of interest policy.
Okay. Thanks.
Is the wood property in the flood plain? That's a good question.
I don't think-
They're redrawing the maps and raising the level.
Go ahead. Look it up and get back to us next week, I have it.
I don't have any access to more draws maps. But the town has that to be part of the record here what the flood plains are.
Uh, there's, if it is, there's three other houses below it
That are worse?
That are worse than us, you know.
It's in, you can get those maps overlays right on the town plan. So you do have access to it, thanks.
So everybody's happy with me contacting Chester?
Mm-hmm. Any other older unfinished business, ever?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, any new business?
I think we need to go into executive session on the personal, treasurer personal.
Treasurer personal, yeah. Okay. Discuss the treasurer's position and, and then now the-
There's one other question, but another personal.
Another personal issue, okay.
Okay.
All right, does anybody else have anything offer? So let me make a motion, we go into executive session? John did?
I'm getting a motion.
Okay. Thank you all for coming tonight.
Thank you all.